All right, welcome, ladies and gentlemen. A call to order the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners this September 10th in our business meeting. I'll ask Mr. Krupp to call the roll.
Well, good morning, Commissioners. Welcome back from the summer recess. Joining us this morning is Mr. Stephen Madcor, County Council, and also to my left and to your right, Mary Rathke, our Clerk of the Board. I'll start with the roll. Commissioner Bernard?
Here.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Chair Ludlow.
Here. You all please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business that we really try to do every time is citizens communication. I have a couple cards here. Mr. Stephen Bates and Mr. Michael Fitz.
I'm Steve Bates from Boring. Lived there for 38 years, and as you probably remember, I have a few concerns about Boring and Metro. At our last Boring CPO meeting, and by the way, Chair Fitz is with me and he'll be testifying shortly, we had a discussion after three meetings of discussions. We passed a position statement dated September 1st of which each of you have a copy. We adopted this position statement a week ago Tuesday, and then I understand a week later, this commission actually addressed it before we even got to bring this document to you. And for that, on behalf of the people of Boring, I want to thank Chair Ludlow, Commissioner Smith, and Commissioner Savis for siding with the people of Boring in the issue in regards to changing the urban reserve designation to undesignated. To follow up with that, attached to that position statement, is a copy of the dash 20 amendment that you folks helped develop for House Bill 3543. Representative Kenimer has offered to carry a bill that would have this wording, and it would be only this wording in that bill with a closed-in relating clause so that nobody can really add anything to it, and conceivably, we can get this bill through. What this will do is this will force Metro to actually meet with the people of Boring, with Clackamas County, and state legislators, so that we can sit down and talk about the future of Boring and the land uses that we have. Now, to let you know what I have a vision of, we've got 112 years of history, and we want to have 112 years of future. And that future involves a multi-use district. A multi-use being that we have agriculture, we have commercial, we have industrial, and we have residential, all in the same district, not urbanization as what Metro is proposing. We wish to have a rural center designation, and that is the future, or I should say, that's the vision that I have for Boring, is that we actually become a rural center, a designation that's set by state law. And that's what I'm working towards, and I'm hoping that you folks will help us work to that end. Thank you very much.
Steve, I think it's a great idea, as you noted, and the board voted to designate that property. There's been a long struggle out there for Boring to get out of the UGB anyway, and if you look at the foundation farmland, and beyond that, what they've designated as urban reserves, the buttes up there, which will never develop because of huge infrastructure costs to do so, it's ridiculous to believe that Boring will ever be more than what it should be, and that's a rural center, as you said. You know, there was talk of that Sandy would eventually take the Boring area. That's a lot of miles of infrastructure away. Damascus, obviously, there's some problems there, and probably will never connect with a more urbanized Boring area. And as I mentioned in the study session, you know, it talks about Gresham taking that area, the Clackanoma area, ridiculous. They have over 830 acres they've designated for growing in Multnomah County. So they're not going to be tapping into the Boring area anytime soon. So I appreciate you bringing that for us today. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, I was happy to be at the CPO meeting last when you guys all passed this, and you know, this whole land use thing is complex, but without getting into the weeds, I do want to say that, at least statutorily, that there's a limit on how large a rural industrial lot or a commercial lot can be, or the activity can be. So there's limits to that, and if the population and the employment base there is being satisfied locally as reasonably as possible, people obviously don't just live and work in the same community typically, but provided we can meet that and there's adequate, that all those needs are met in an adequate way, that's great. I do know there's communities that are incorporated, Boring is not, are incorporated, that have issues with services not being around, that they have to go to a city or a larger city to get. And that even applies up in Welch's and Mount Hood area. There are a community, a hamlet, a village, actually, and they are looking for services that are typically in a larger urban area. I won't say metropolitan, because I don't think that's the goal. That's not what Clackamas County is, but certainly those urban services are something that a lot of people aspire to and want to have. So that's all I have. Mr. Fitz?
Thank you, Commissioners. I was born and bred in Multnomah County, and I thought I'd spend the rest of my life there. And then about five years ago, while I was gone hunting, my wife bought a house in Boring. Probably one of the best things that happened to me in my life. I was in the oil business for a lot of years, and Commissioner Bernard, when I say Star Oil Co., maybe that'll, now you realize why you recognize me. No, he never bought from me, so there's no conflict of interest. I've been politically active since I was about 10 or 11. My dad was a union painter and was active in politics and drew me in with him. I've been making the newspaper with a picture since I was about 18, when the Seattle paper interviewed me in Vietnam. But this is the first time that I've ever been above the fold on the front page, and I'm honored to represent Boring here in the highly compensated position as Chair of the Boring CPO. I've done a lot of ballot measures and petitions and stuff in my life. It's a lot easier out in North Portland, what you guys would call St. John's, where the doors are about 50, 60 feet apart. In Boring, when you take a petition out to have it signed, you drive, because there's lots of 700-foot driveways. In the time that it would have taken me in North Portland to get 250 or 300 signatures, I got 98 in Boring. The absolute amazing thing to me was, I knocked on 100 doors and got 98 signatures. Boring is adamantly against being in Metro. I lived in Boring for three days when the Sheriff's Department showed up in my driveway to tell me what I couldn't do inside the Metro boundary. So there is a difference. Now, we're looking to change this. Metro was a much kinder, gentler organization when my friend Mike Burton ran it, and it was a smaller organization when he left. Today, it's looking to grow. And when Trimet finally realizes they're bankrupt, Metro plans on taking it over, and that's just about going to double the size of the organization. I don't want to pay the debt of Trimet by being inside Boring or inside Metro, and neither do the people that I live around. And when you voted on that issue, abstaining on that issue is an insult to all the voters in Boring. You take a stand one way or the other, you don't waffle. And all I can say, Commissioners, is please help us and have Metro let Boring go.
Commissioner Schrader.
So my question is, Commissioners, do we need a bill to do this, just a point and work group? Do it. It's right, the outline is, right here in the bill, you don't particularly need to have a legislative thing. We can appoint a work group and do it. Why not?
Well, it seems like Representative Kenimer has already got the vehicle, instrument before us. I don't see any reason to recreate the wheel. Commissioner Savis?
Just in responding to the question that Commissioner Schrader mentioned, I believe that we need Metro's cooperation. I don't think we've seen or heard that as of yet, based on the communications that I've reviewed.
Well, and actually, Chair, what I meant to say is, you don't need a bill. This commission can set up a work group as a commission, if that's the way route we want to go. And this is the template for it. You could change the template if you wanted.
Well, we can certainly discuss that, and I certainly would want Mr. Schmidt, and let alone that, our legal staff, involved in that too, but I support this request, and Representative Kenimer seems to also do that. Yes, Commissioner Savis is right. We do need Metro's consent. That's been tough on all fronts, has it not? And will continue to be, unfortunately. And that includes on the urban growth report, on everything they do. They have the hammer on us, and they're finding some resistance, at least at Impact last night, and probably at other places too, especially with this commission. Commissioner Smith?
Well, we had a land use vote this week, where we voted to take that whole Boring area and make it undesignated, and that's a start. And I think four of the Commissioners, or three of the Commissioners, supported that as we move forward in our negotiation and our opposition to this regional planning that does not, that is not favorable to Clackamas County's growth and job situation and overall prosperity. So this commission has already come out with that. You have a bill in the legislature, and we can certainly take a position on that when the time comes. And this will be for the February session, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Commissioner Schrader.
I just wanted to let Mr. Fitz know, Mike Burton is a very dear friend of mine as well. I've worked with him on a number of issues, and particularly when I was doing veterans issues, he and I have worked very closely together. And am I to understand, we appointed your son to the planning commission? Did we not?
Yep.
Yeah, he takes after his grandmother a little bit more than I do. He's more akin to an Irish grandmother.
Well, yeah, well, I've got that Irish grandmother and great-grandmother myself, but I just want to compliment you. He really was, he really was an outstanding candidate, and I think he's going to do a great job. But I'm all for, as I said, colleagues, let's do the work group. Pick the people, get her going, and then, you know, and start attending Metro meetings.
So we will definitely take up and acknowledge this in one of our work sessions and discuss how this should go forward, but it sounds like a great idea to us. All right? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much, Commissioners.
Thank you for your time.
And now, Mr. Krupp, we have a public hearing.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'm going to invite Mr. Lane Miller, who is our retired purchasing manager, up to present this. This is a request for an exemption to our local contracting rules, and it relates to the jail project. So, Mr. Miller, go right ahead.
Good morning, Commissioners. Don, thank you for delicately putting that retired piece in here. Appreciate it. My name is Lane Miller, purchasing manager with Clackamas County. We're here seeking authorization to use a request for proposals method for selecting a contractor for the membrane roofing and HVAC replacement at the Clackamas County jail facility. In order to use the request for proposals method to solicit for public improvement projects, the Board of Commissioners, acting as the local contract review board, must approve findings of fact that justify the granting of an exemption from the requirement of public contracting rules and regulations, which require the use of a traditional bidding process and allow the use of the alternative method. Before final adoption of the findings exempting a contract for a public improvement from the requirement of competitive bidding, the public agency is required to hold a public hearing. Notification of the new, public hearing is to be published in at least one trade newspaper in general statewide circulation, a minimum of 14 days prior to the hearing. An advertisement was placed in the Daily Journal of Commerce on August 26th notifying interested parties of the draft findings. The advertisement also stated that the draft findings were available at the office of the purchasing manager, and that this public hearing would be held today on the 10th of September. No comments were received during that 14-day period. This meeting is the last opportunity for receiving comments. If no comments are received that result in revision of the draft findings, the Board of Commissioners may, at its discretion, adopt these draft findings as the final findings for the exemption for this, at this public hearing. A little bit about the project. The county's desired to replace the roofing material on the county jail facility for the past two years. The roof replacement, along with replacement of multiple HVAC units, a rate over the jail had been funded, where it was initially funded in the 2013-14 fiscal year budget. The project specifications were developed with the Sheriff's Office input and jail in-house maintenance staff, along with facilities management. Specifications were provided to purchasing in July of 2014. The project was advertised as a traditional design bid build project to the bidding community in July of 2014. Bid opening was held in December of 2014, with four responsible bids were received. The lowest bid, however, exceeded our initial budget of $700,000 to $800,000 for the project. After some work with the finance department and through the board, we increased the project contingency adequate to cover the $1.34 million low bid. The award recommendation went forward. Contract was signed by the board in March of 2015. In June of 2015, we received a letter from the contractor questioning whether or not the underlayment of the existing roof of the facility would actually allow or withstand mechanical fastening as opposed to an adhesive fastening. That, along with some other issues that were raised at that time, kind of informed us that the means and methods of the project were a little more complex than what we'd initially anticipated. The information, again, served to highlight the unique nature of the facility, due to the fact that the structure's basically been built over a period of almost 50 years now. So there's a lot of different generations. In June, a team got together, including County Council Stephen Madcor, Deputy Chief Kevin Lang, Mark Gonzalez, Finance Director Jeff Jorgensen, Facilities Manager, myself, to discuss the situation. Through a very comprehensive conversation with the group, it was concluded that because of the complicated structure, because of the nature of the work, because of the nature of the facility and its operations, 24/7 operations, that a request for proposal process would probably get us a better outcome. And that will allow us, the request for proposal process will allow us to consider elements other than cost that come to the most advantageous offer. In March of 2015, the contract that was then existing was terminated by mutual agreement with both parties, the county and the contractor. Is what we propose to do is use a request for proposal process. We'll publicly advertise the proposal, the request for proposals, and a contract will be selected based on a number of criterias. Qualifications, experience with similar projects, project understanding and approach, and detailed schedule, which is probably one of the more critical elements, the construction means and methods, and how they sequence the work, references, and of course, cost will be an element. Each of those will be provided, a weighting in its evaluation. The submitted proposals will be reviewed and scored by a selection committee, with points being awarded based on the relative merit of the information provided in each response, and the highest rated proposal, each area will be given the highest number of points. That will help us determine the most advantageous offer to the county. Based on that selection process, the selection committee will provide a recommendation. Their recommendation will ultimately be coming to the board for your consideration for an ensuing contract. Statutorily, the test of ORS 279C 335 requires that the local contract review board make the following findings as part of the authorization to use an alternative method. A, that it's unlikely that the exemption will encourage favoritism in awarding public improvement contracts, or substantially diminish the competition for public improvement contracts. And that awarding the public improvement contract under the exemption will result in a substantial cost savings to the contracting agency or the public. The request for proposal process and solicitation documents have been designed to fully comply with the test of ORS 279C 335 for alternative contracting methods. The findings have been reviewed and approved by County Council. Finally, staff respectfully recommends that the Board of Commissioners, acting as the local contract review board, considers the comments received from the public, if any, and directs staff to revise the findings if necessary. If no revisions are to be made, staff recommends that the board adopt the findings and grant the exemption. With that, does the board have any questions?
Yes, they do. Commissioner Smith?
Thank you for the presentation.
You're welcome.
That was quite comprehensive. Since the cost of this project is increasing much more than anybody thought it would, where is the additional money coming from?
I believe the additional funds were found in the capital projects.
Capital construction?
Capital construction, yes.
For the entire county, the capital construction?
Yes, yes. There was, at that point in time, there were funds that we had not yet identified a use for, and those were used to augment the budget for this project.
And how much additional money is it going to be, you think?
Our estimate's still holding at the $1.34 that we got on our low bid.
Which is almost double what you thought the original cost was?
Originally, in 2014, or 20, actually, 2013, we thought it would be somewhere between $700,000 and $800,000. So it'll be about $300,000 more.
So by the action that you're requesting us to take today, you think it will allow for more competitive bidding?
I think we'll get better offers, and I think the competition will not only be in the cost of the work, but the quality of the contractor doing the work. And there's value there. It'll also allow us to insulate ourselves from change order on the project.
Good, and I think the change orders, as anybody in construction knows,
Right.
are some of the most expensive part of the projects. This has been an issue for many, many years, getting a new roof on the jail facility.
It has.
And I believe the sheriff's budget somehow in a roundabout way has some money for that. But obviously, the costs have gone up. You know, it's always troublesome to me, but when something comes in twice as much as what we had originally figured, but that's happened in the marketplace right now. The cost of materials and labor is very high because of the supply and demand situation. But I don't look forward to having a roof that costs that much, but we'll see.
Yeah, and it's not just the roof itself, but there's also, I believe, if I remember correctly, some, yeah, 15 of the 24 HVAC units themselves also, so.
Right, so you're right, you're right about that, it's just not a roof.
Yeah, the roof itself, the roofing material itself, just that portion of the project alone is probably $700,000 to $800,000. We hadn't anticipated the increase, the significant increase in cost of the number of HVAC units and the cost of those units. So that's where the...
Just so the public knows, HVAC represents heating, venting, and air conditioning, is that correct?
Yes.
Oh, one follow-up question, sorry, Board. So does that mean that we will have air conditioning in the jail?
We do now.
We do now.
Okay, but we've also had complaints that the conditions...
That's what part of this process is to...
Yeah, to make it more, more air conditioning, more comfortable, is that it?
Provide a better environment within the structure of the facility, and help with the facility, yes.
Okay, thank you, Lane.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Bernard?
Yeah, I'd say we're not striving for comfort.
Let's not forget, we have people working in there that would like a little comfort.
Well, you know, in 2013, people were hungry for jobs. Things have changed, so the prices have gone up. But I think it's interesting that, you know, before we had to take the low bid, now we actually have to, we have the opportunity to look at qualifications, and I think that's quite odd that, you know, you have to take the low bid, even though that person might not be as qualified as somebody who's bidding just a little bit higher, so, I mean, this is a win-win. And the HVAC systems have changed so much. They're so much more efficient. Just happen to have had one replaced myself for less than a million, and...
$99,000.
It's actually free, it was covered under my homeowner's. But, I mean, the efficiency will be improved too, and I think that's great. I also had a membrane roof put on, which solved a 20-year problem. So, I mean, things have gotten a lot better, and I, there's no question that qualifications is very important when you do a huge project like that, so I'm totally in support of this.
Commissioner Savis?
You mentioned weighting, the weighting of the, basically the scoring, right?
Yes, sir.
So that in a certain criteria, that'll be weighted higher or lower, depending on...
Correct.
So who determines that? It's not the review committee, obviously, right?
That's kind of my role and responsibility in the organization, is to take a look at that and set a weighting that reflects the anticipated outcome. In some instances, approach to project is more important than, or as important as cost. In some cases, cost is more important than how you're going to do the work. Depends on the complexity of the project and what you're really trying to get to, to get the best value or the most advantageous offer for the agency.
So that's in-house?
Correct.
The weighting, and the anticipated outcome is, in this case, is?
Best bang for the buck, as you anticipated, that we will get a very good price, and we'll get a very good approach to the project, so we can get the thing, get the work done in a timely manner. In the past, we've, and as Commissioner Bernard expressed, the low bid process works well when it's a very simple or a very easily defined project, where you've got a little more, more moving parts, or you've got an old facility, in this case, where we're trying to retrofit 2014 equipment, or 2016, 2015, 2016 equipment, on a building that was set up for equipment that was built in the 70s. It makes it a little more of a challenge, so you need the expertise of being able to do those, make those changes, and anticipate those changes in the bidding process is really where the value of it is.
I appreciate your role, and congratulations, welcome back.
Thank you, sir.
Right? Last question. I know this is all guided by state law statute, basically, on bidding and so forth, so under the weighting, what does that fall under as far as state statute or law or...
The ORS 279C, basically, its basic tenet says you will run a low bid, traditional design bid build. It also states that you can use a proposal process where you have weighted criteria. So the ability to use it and the authorization to use it is embedded in the statute, however, the statute also requires us to come to our local contract review board rule to ask permission to use that process. So it's a very well-established use. Generally, I will, in the past, I've come to the board for alternatives when the project leans that way. It just needs, it needs that, a little broader scope of ability to make a decision.
That was 279C?
ORS 279C, yes.
Thank you.
The thing that concerns me greatly is the estimate, and I appreciate that it was started in 2013, but when the bid was agreed upon in December of 2014, that gave us a lot of opportunity to come up with a better hypothesis in regards to what it was going to cost. For it to come in at almost double, and that was the lowest bid, is a bit disconcerting. I would hope that we don't have a repeat of that, so we have to repeat this process, but we will not forget that this particular contractor that accepted the $1.3 or $1.4 million bid, put it off, put it off, made excuses, and then finally asked us to please forget that they even agreed to that. So there's, we're a bit victimized by that particular contractor, and I think we should remember that in the future.
Oh, absolutely.
But, and also think we should build into our contracts that, which says that if they agree to do that, and they want to back out, then they're going to pay us some money in the future. in the future. Because for us to completely let them go costs us a bunch of money, costs us time and consternation with the problems over there on that jail roof, and it just, it's untenable that, that, that would go on this long before they finally bailed out.
Just as, as a point of clarity, it's, the, the bid that we received was one million thirty-four thousand, not one point three, one point zero three four.
Yeah, I wrote down one point three four, so how much is it?
That's what you said.
The low, yeah, I, I probably misspoke, this is why I'm retiring. It was one million thirty-four thousand.
That's better.
So it was about three or four hundred thousand, actually, over what we had anticipated a year or two, almost two years prior to putting the bid on the street.
Commissioners, any further questions? Otherwise, we'll open a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing and ask if anyone wishes to speak on this matter. We'll close the public hearing and ask for the motion.
I move, we approve the request for an exemption and authorization to use the request for proposal method for the membrane roofing system and H vac replacement for the Clackamas County Jail Facility project.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Bernard with the motion, Commissioner Schrader with the second. Further discussion? I'll ask the clerk to call the poll.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. It's time for the consent agenda, I'll ask the clerk to read the consent agenda by title.
If I may interrupt just quickly, I just wanted to acknowledge Mr. Mill, this may be the very last time he appears before this board under any circumstances, unless he decides to reapply for his job.
Yeah, right.
But I wanted to thank him for his many years of service to Clackamas County, so.
Thank you, Lane.
Thanks, Lane.
All right, so now, the clerk will read the consent agenda by title.
Okay, the consent agenda. Under Health, Housing and Human Services, approval of a construction agreement between the Department of Health, Housing and Human Services and Par-Tech Construction for the Westland Senior Center Expansion Project. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Multnomah County Department of Community Justice, safety first for the home visitation program. Approval of a renewal intergovernmental agreement with Mid-Columbia Center for Living for cost reimbursements from the upgrade and implementation of the Measures and Outcomes Tracking System Program for the Cerner Electronic Health Record Software. Approval of a revenue agreement with Care Oregon for the Behavioral Health Clinic's integration with the E P I C Electronic Health Record System. Approval of a renewal single case provider agreement with Managed Health Network, Inc. to provide primary and behavioral health services to an assigned member of the Clackamas County Health Center Clinics. Under the Department of Transportation and Development, approval of addendum to intergovernmental agreement twenty eleven dash four seven nine three with the City of Canby for grading, building inspection, plan review, and permitting services. Under elected officials' approval of previous business meeting minutes. Under the Department of Emergency Management, approval of fiscal year twenty fourteen Emergency Management Performance Grant Amendment Number One between Clackamas County and the State of Oregon. Under the Juvenile Department, approval of intergovernmental agreement between the City of Oregon City and Clackamas County for Oregon City Enhancement Grant Funds. Under Business and Community Services, a board order approving the Clackamas County Public Oral Auction to disperse tax foreclosed and surplus properties on October twenty first, twenty fifteen, and the government distribution to Clackamas County D T D Road Maintenance. Under our Development Agency, approval of the First Amendment to the Disposition and Development Agreement to convey real property from Clackamas County Development Agency to A four R K L L C. And underwater environment services, approval of intergovernmental agreement between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Clackamas County for work on the Tolbert Street Southeast Eighty Second Drive to Southeast Minuteman Way Project. And an approval of an intergovernmental agreement amendment between Clackamas County Service District Number One and Surface Water Management Agency of Clackamas County and the Regional Coalition for Clean Rivers and Streams to provide community education about reducing impacts of polluted storm runoff. And that will complete the consent agenda today.
All right, commissioners, you want to pull any of these items? I'll ask for a motion.
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
So the motion by Commissioner Smith, seconded by Commissioner Bernard, further discussion? All right, Mary, the poll.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Commissioner Bernard?
Aye.
Chair Ludlow?
Aye, passes five zero. And now, the county administrator update.
Well, certainly. I wanted to let you know that during the board's summer recess, I approved five matters under the authority of the board on your behalf.
Wow.
And pretty straightforward. One was an application to apply for a grant on behalf of the District Attorney's Office. The other was to approve an award of a grant to our juvenile department. And then the three other matters involved cooperation agreements involving our Health, Housing and Human Services Department. The details of these will be included in the minutes of the record for this board meeting. I won't go through all the details for you at this time, but if you have any questions about the matters, I'm happy to talk with you about it. Then, I've got a couple of items here about this coming weekend. So this Saturday is the grand opening of the Max Orange Line, and the county is one of the sponsors at the Park Avenue Station. There will be music, activities, information booths, and food available, and all rides on the Max trains will be free on Saturday. And there'll be events also being conducted at other stops along the way. The event runs from eleven A M. to six P M. on Saturday, September the twelfth. Then the other event I wanted to bring to your attention is that on Friday evening at Milwaukee City Hall, there will be a nine eleven commemoration honoring veterans and first responders. Former Representative Darlene Houli will be a guest speaker, and the event is sponsored by two of our divisions from Health, Housing and Human Services, our Behavioral Health Division and our Social Services Division. The commemoration runs from five thirty to seven P M. just outside the Milwaukee City Hall on Friday. And the other thing I wanted to share with you was a note we received regarding our Building Codes Division. It came through our website from a satisfied customer, and I'm always happy to share these with you. This person wrote, "Could you please bottle and distribute this e-permitting webpage format to all of the other municipalities and counties in Oregon?"
Wow.
"This was by far the best e-permit experience ever for our company." From company registration to application to issuance and printing, perfect. We are big fans.
Wow.
So that's really, really a nice note.
Weeha!
I'll share that with you, so, good. That's my report.
All right, and now it's time for commissioner communication. Commissioner Schrader.
Yeah, I'd like to start by talking a little bit, we took a, a two-week recess, and I have an uncle and an aunt. My aunt, Muriel, is eighty-five, and my uncle, Jack, is eighty-seven, and I had an opportunity to go out and visit them. My uncle isn't doing really well, but it was good to go back to where I grew up with my Italian-American family and visit with my cousins, and really kind of made me very reflective in a, in a way of how I got into public service. My uncle was the truant officer, was a history teacher and the truant officer of Portchester High School. So he was the guy that tracked down all the kids that, that weren't showing up. And, you know, kind of being Italian-American, everybody kind of had a nickname, and his nickname was Jumpin' Jack Junta. Okay, so-
Jumpin' Jack what?
Jumpin' Jack Junta, yeah.
Junta.
You know, it's kind of right out of, Junta.
Junta.
Junta is, it's actually from, it's southern Italy, Calabria, the very little tip of the boot. But he is really a very remarkable man, because, yeah, he would track kids down, but he was also the guy that made sure they got to the doctors, would bring them to the dentist, would go to their homes, would get them involved in sports, and he did it for days and hours. And as I said, now he's not doing well, he's, he's home again after, after kind of having a, a stroke incident. But even at eighty-seven, he still goes to the school every day and actually does some work, because he's so dedicated to that. And so that's kind of an example, I think, of, of what selfless public service really is. And I just wanted to publicly say that I admire him, and I also learned it from my grandmother, you know, when I was driving around my old hometown, my grandmother would take me to visit all of her little lady friends, and where they would talk and chat, and she, she was someone who always helped, always brought food, always was running every spaghetti supper in the Catholic Church. So those are the examples, when I was thinking about how do I even get into what I'm doing. I think it was kind of accidental, but when I look at, at how I grew up, I can see where the roots of, of that came from. So the other thing is I got to see my grandchildren, which all of you already know is kind of the joy of my life, and they're both doing really well. Jasper is talking up a storm with an English accent, and talked about holiday, he's on holiday all the time there, which was really, and our little gal Harper is now, her nickname is now Chee Chee, because she has big cheeks, so she's little Chee Chee. So that was, that was, that was pleasant. And I will let people know, yes, I kept up with all my email and was, you know, making sure I knew what was going on here in the county. The other thing I'd like to talk about a little bit as well is, I'm really intrigued with the Boring idea, and here's why. We have, and I'm going to pull it up on our website, an agricultural investment plan in this county, and that area truly is one of our bread baskets. And I think one of the assertions that needs to be made from an economic development standpoint is that agriculture is a real key element of our economy in this county. And we need to be protecting that, and we need to be honoring that as one of our major economic drivers. So I'd like to direct folks to that website of Economic Development and take a very close look at the Ag Investment Plan, because that will, I think, give people the opportunity to make the assertions that indeed agriculture needs to be protected, and when we think about what we designate as urban or rural, let's take into account that agriculture is a big part of not only who we are as the people, but it is a big economic driver. The other piece I'd like to mention about Boring, because we have talked about Boring today, is there is an international company in Boring, Vanport International, and they're kind of tucked away in the back across, around the area of the Boring Fire Station, but they are a huge multinational, international export-import industry of wood products. And did you look at what they did? They pioneered exporting wood products to Japan. They have offices in Japan, they have offices, I was just kind of looking them up, they have offices in Russia, believe it or not, they have offices in Canada, and on their staff and the people that work there, most of them are fluent in Japanese, because that was one of the big markets that they opened up. They are still there, they are huge. Look them up, there's Vanport, Russia, Vanport, Canada Company, and Vanport International in Boring, Oregon. So Boring, Oregon is not actually so boring, if you know the area there, so it made me think I should go visit them again. I, I visited them years ago, would it be kind of good to take a look and see what they've been up to? So with that, we're going to do the Willamette Falls Legacy Meeting tomorrow, I know Commissioner Smith and I will be at that, so. And it's back to work in a real way. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Bernard?
So one of the events I went to last night was the Willamette Falls Legacy Event at the Portland Art Museum. It was tremendous. I've never been to a me, I mean, never, a meeting so positive, upbeat, excited. About half the group was from Clackamas County, the other half was from around the region. And so that, it just, somebody told me they felt like crying, they were so excited, that with that kind of positive, upbeat attitude, this project is going to make it. And the presenters were really good, kept people interested. It got a little hot and crowded in there, they were, they had to bring extra chairs in, there were still fifty people standing, so it was just amazing. And also, all Trimet buses, light rail, and the streetcar, which is not owned by Trimet, is free all day Saturdays, so take advantage of it and ride one end to the other. Guess that was on speaker. Anyway, it, take advantage of it, ride end to end, it's an exhausting ride, by the way, I've done it. I do this often, everywhere I go, I ride light rail to the ends. Used to walk back from them, but it's take advantage of it and see what light rail can do for the region. I'm really excited about the opening of the Red, uh, Orange Line. And also this week, last weekend, I attended a Labor Day picnic at Oaks Park, also huge attendance. Had the opportunity to serve meals to thousands, I mean, it was literally thousands. I thought that line was never going to end. Finally, we did take a break so that we could move on to other things, because we couldn't, we couldn't get away from that, and the bees enjoyed it, too. I was serving Jell-O and coleslaw, and the bees had a great meal, but there were some people who were pretty frightened of bees. But it was a great event. You know, there's a lot of criticism about Metro not willing to work with us, but actually they offered us an opportunity just yesterday. We talked about an opportunity to work with them on the remand, and we refused. So they did offer us an opportunity. And it came in a letter from Tom Hughes, they're willing to sit down, they're hoping they can work with us, but if they don't, they'll do it on their own, so I don't, I would not say that they're not willing to sit down and talk. Maybe the message needs to be different. And I don't necessarily disagree that, you know, it seems a little odd that, that, you know, Metro stretches through parts of Boring, but Boring's probably grown quite a bit. But one of the reasons we looked at that area is because of some of the industrialization that has already occurred in that area, and there, the other thing that is so important is that, you know, folks in Boring could use the jobs. And having to drive across the region to get to Hillsborough doesn't make sense if you live in Boring, or in Sandy, or up at the mountain, or even in Gresham. So the whole idea of the urban rural reserves was to give some balance to job opportunities, to growth opportunities, and, and that was the whole purpose behind that. I, I think that, you know, if we worked and found out a way to compromise with all of the urban rural reserves, we could come to a solution, but, you know, frankly, changing that designation opens up the whole process again, and that's my biggest worry. I mean, we'll just be in court the rest of our lives, and I don't want to do that. I, and I, and I've said before, and I think Carlotta, Carlotta said it yesterday, it's not made in stone. We're going to review it again in twenty years, and even that is not in stone, it can be sooner. And frankly, I think it will be sooner, because we're going to run out of space. The urban growth, you know, Metro decided not to expand the urban growth boundary, I have some issues with that in the value of, the cost of homes to young families and homeless folks, and I do have some issues with that. I have not heard, last night, they, the impact made some amendment, I have not heard what that amendment is, and I'm interested in seeing that and hearing about it. I guess Dan Chandler was there. I did sit in last time for Martha last, well, she was out of town, and it was a great discussion around that issue. But I look forward to the opening of the Orange Line, I have an opportunity to speak on Saturday, and I, my work with the Orange Line began in the late, in the nineties, so I've been involved in this in a long ti, a long time, and- And I, I must add that I went to Portland State for 10 years. I had to ride the bus to Portland State, which was great because I could do my homework on it. It would have been great to have taken light rail right to Portland State. Parking in downtown is not one of my favorite things to look for. Last night, I had to look for a parking spot. I think I drove around the block five times. But I look forward to that and, and I hope to have an opportunity to go to Portland and experience some of the cultural opportunities more often because of the Orange Line. Thank you.
Dog.
Oh, the dog. Thank you. I don't know why I keep forgetting this. So today, we're, we decided to, you know, let people know that we have a great dog shelter and there are great dogs there that are looking for a home, and this is Ricky Rue. He's friendly, affectionate, with plenty of doggy kisses for everyone. His long tail will wag with excitement to say hello to those who meet him. A nice guy like him will be a welcome addition to your home. He would enjoy a visit from you soon. So stop by the shelter and visit with some of our wonderful dogs. I have two dogs from a shelter. And for more information about Ricky Rue and other adoptable dogs, please contact Clackamas County Dog Services at 503-655-8628 or www.clackamas.us/dogs. And that's how we found our dog. We looked on the web. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Smith.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair. The only thing I'm going to say about what Commissioner Bernard shared is it's very much a minority opinion on this board regarding what happens with Boring, what happens with Metro. And he oftentimes is the lone dissenting vote on these decisions, but I'm going to let the other commissioners take over that. I, too, had somewhat of a working break, but it was very good. It's very nice to, just to get away from county business, recharge your energies, reset the computer in our brains and go forward. Regarding the Willamette Falls Project, I had the distinct pleasure of sitting in with a region-wide meeting with Senator Ron Wyden on the Willamette Falls locks reopening, the heritage process, project, and also the development of the Walkway and the Partners at the Old Blue Heron site. It was very good. We also had members from the, all of the major agencies. And Senator Wyden went on record with the Corps of Engineers person, Colonel Agliar, who Colonel Agliar keeps telling us, no, 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 you don't get to reopen the locks. And Senator Wyden says, yes, 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 and why? And I was very proud of our senator coming to Oregon City, sitting at the meeting in a room full of people, and actually advocating for the needs of our area. I asked Senator Wyden, when I was in Washington DC many months ago, I said, Senator, we're having some trouble with the Corps of Engineers. And he sat a minute, says, I will come out to Oregon and I will convene all the players. We'll sit in a room and try to iron things out. And he did do that. And I, and I appreciate that a lot. I did some other few county things that were on the schedule, that the only way to sometimes do your schedule is to have a little bit of a working break, so I did that as well. But probably the most important thing, excuse me, yesterday, I celebrated 38 years of marriage to a remarkable man. And he's remarkable in that we've been married 38 years. So I posted on my Facebook a picture of, instead of a picture of us in our wedding gowns and whatever, a picture of the Traeger BBQ that is almost 20 years old that I took in and had rebuilt. And you, and my Facebook lit up so much about the rebuilt 20-year-old Traeger BBQ. It's better than any baby or dog I could have posted on Facebook. So that was a lot of fun. And we had quite the conversation with that. Who knew a Traeger BBQ would be better than my 38 years of marriage?
Oh, man.
Yeah, okay.
Brings a tear to my eye.
I know.
All right. Commissioner Sabas.
Well, I, I will say, when it comes to perhaps land use and things, that we probably have five different opinions. I think that's fair. I do want to give a little bit of a brief update. This morning was J-PAC. I'm just loving to hear, I just can't, can't wait any longer. I'm just anxious to hear what happened last night. I don't know the details of what took place at MPAC last night. But this morning at J-PAC, I'll share some more of this in the coming days. But you may recall several months ago that there was a J-PAC Finance Subcommittee formed, and I sat on that, I was giving you updates, and we were scheduled to have, the next discussion was going to be, and agreed upon, was agreed upon was that we would talk about guiding principles, and then I would take that back to the commission as far as what the criteria may be that the board could get behind. And I found out this morning that, that actually, the, the recommendation was that they go out and started engaging people in this whole program, and, and it was like the subcommittee's role was forgotten and/or this charge of the next meeting was forgotten. So I think we got it back on schedule to bring it back to a discussion and set up guiding principles that we can agree upon. Hopefully, we can agree upon, but I was a little bit taken aback by, it kind of grew legs and had a whole different context to it, and it was like something where we just weren't going to have any control or input any longer, at least it appeared to be that way. The other discussion that we've been really working on has been around the MTIP RFPA policy programs. We, they invited us to input on policy. We've inputted on policy. The letter came up from Chair Ludlow on behalf of the commission, and that was supposed to be on the table for discussion. The letters were not there from Washington County and Clackamas County, but instead, Metro's response to those letters were there. So it was a little bit, a little bit concerning that they were not responding to the policy invitation and instead rolled out programs and a whole bunch of stuff that was not what was solicited for us to do in the first place. That was really troubling. We had, had a lot of discussion around, yesterday at CCBA and others, having a lot of discussion around land use again. And I think Wilsonville, perhaps, I think was been told over and over and over again that the reason they can't bring in their housing is because Clackamas County doesn't have urban reserves, you know? So putting on the pressure on the Clackamas County doesn't have urban reserves. And over and over, we've heard that for the last several months here. And, but what hasn't been said from Metro is, by the way, when they do have the urban reserves, they still don't, they're still not going to be able to bring in that land for housing anyhow because there's another rule, another obstacle whereby we can't do subregional needs. We have enough housing determined by the UGR report anyhow, so therefore, meaning we have enough housing, Wilsonville won't get what they want anyhow. But I thought it was a little bit inaccurate to only say that it was because we don't have reserves, and we're trying to abide by the law. I think the Senate Bill 1011 is, is now law. It's in statute, and we're trying to abide by it. And I, I find it odd that we would be criticized for trying to meet the spirit and the intent of the law and just go along with it and hold on for 20 years with the promise that we'll get to it in 20 years, or we'll get to it sooner in 20 years, when, when the law itself has state, state statutes, administrative rules that say you can't do that for 20 years. So we're too conflicted. This is a complex issue. I know we're all working through that, but I, it's very clear, I think we have five different opinions on this, but I think we do coalesce around several things, and we have a majority on issues when they come up. And unfortunately, I just, I hope that, I, I'm not sure what Commissioner Bernard was saying when we refused. Actually, I thought the consensus coming out of Tuesday's discussion is that we wanted to have a meeting with Metro, and we want to discuss how we work through these, these issues, and that we didn't refuse anything. It's premature for a hearing. If that's what was, where we're not going to participate in is a hearing, it's premature for a hearing. We have a lot of work to do, and hopefully Metro will, will join us in that meeting. So that's what I have for today.
Thank you. Yes, let's get some clarification. When the urban-rural map came out, two cities in the Stafford area, Westland and Twalton, sued over it. Now, that sent it to the Court of Appeals, and Court of Appeals went to LCDC and said, you need to reman this back to the county because it's missing some, some parts that address the transportation needs in that area. By doing that, it opens it up much wider than a narrow reman, which Metro would have us believe. We, we asked that Metro come and set at a table that we would convene with three cities, that being Westland, Twalton, and Lake Oswego, to talk about Stafford. They agreed to that. Now, before we could even set up a meeting, all of a sudden, Metro says, we're going to have a hearing on this issue, and it's going to be quick, and it's going to be in October. And whether you want to participate or not, Clackamas County, we're going to have this hearing anyway. What we said is, we'd be glad to have a meeting with you, but a hearing is a little bit premature because Metro is excluding the cities from any consideration in this thing. They're pushing them aside. So, you know, Metro is Metro, and we've had our problems with them, but I wrote this for other bodies that I've spoken to, but I thought it's appropriate that I read it now. It's, it's what I call my ode to Metro. It goes like this. "Metro is the shepherd I do not want. It maketh me to buy up green pastures. It preventeth me from building beside Still Waters. It sappeth my soul. It leadeth me in the paths of regionalism, for Portland's sake. Yea, though I walk through the valley of the shadow of Metro, it fears no upheaval, for Metro says, 'I'm with thee, and my rod and my staff will guide thee.' Metro prepares the table before me in the presence of mine stakeholders. It anointeth my head with assurances that they are listening. Surely pleading and struggling for local vision and control shall follow me all the days of my life, and I shall not dwell within the house of Metro forever." Anyway, enough of that. And we did do some, some interesting things this last week. We did address land needs. We will continue to do that, and as necessary, we will go to the legislature. Metro is trying to get, get us to a point where they're pointing the finger at us, like has been said, and said, we're the people that's stopping this whole thing, which is just not true because we are responsible for regional needs, sure, but our county is a subregion, as Commissioner Sabas said, and we have specific needs. It's ludicrous for Metro to say, well, there's, there's land to build on in Forest Grove, so therefore, Clackamas County doesn't need any land to build on. Well, on one hand, they say, get out of your car and take light rail, right? And on the other hand, they say, well, no, I'm sorry, if you want to live where you want to live, and you either have to or want to work someplace else, that demands commute. And I appreciate the Orange Line opening. I took my inaugural trip long before this, but folks, that's a straight-line thing that costs over $210 million a mile. Big deal. It is still, even though it's a pain, it is still easier and faster to drive than to take light rail, and that will continue. So anyway, I want to announce a few things. First of all, the Clackamas County Commissioners Town Hall meetings, which Mary's going to put on the screen right now, only two left this calendar year, under the topic of ensure safe and healthy communities. This will be in Canby this month, Tuesday, September 22nd at 6:00 PM at the Canby Fairgrounds. Now, if you missed the Canby Fair, that was our last official meeting, is when we had the Canby Fair. That was a great fair. I don't know the attendance numbers yet, but I'm going to go to the meeting tonight, the Fair Board meeting, and we're going to find out if the numbers exceeded it, but there sure was a lot of happy people there with some really great weather, not as hot as it has been in previous years. And then, under honor, utilize, promote and invest in our natural resources, we're going to hold that appropriately at Welch's at the Resort at the Mountain on Wednesday, October 28th, 2015, at 6:00 PM. Ladies and gentlemen, tomorrow, September 11th, is Patriot Day and National Day of Service and Remembrance. 14 years ago, our country was brutally and senselessly attacked by terrorists. Thousands of innocent Americans were killed and injured as a result of these attacks, including the passengers and crews of four aircraft. People going to work and doing business at the World Trade Center and the Pentagon, rescue workers and bystanders. To honor the memory of all these individuals and the families they left behind, please join me in a moment of silence. We also want to take this opportunity to thank the everyday heroes who keep us all safe, including our troops, emergency responders, fire and law enforcement, and 911 dispatchers. The health, safety and comfort of our community is enhanced by the professionalism, dedication, resourcefulness and integrity of these individuals, agencies and departments.
Sharon, I'm going to do something a little out of order here.
You're going to leave the room again with your speaker on?
No, sorry, that was, that was a long-distance call from my daughter with the babies, and I just couldn't resist seeing them one more time. So that's the reason why I left the room. Sorry about that. But, no, the, I just wanted to mention the 911 piece of this. Thank you for letting me talk out of order. I had a very close friend that day, because that was the area where I grew up, who was down there when it happened, and if she had taken, if she had fallen in the crowd, there was a likelihood she, she would have been seriously injured. So it's kind of a close, personal thing because of my family down there, and I, it was my friend Jane Botticelli, who I grew up with. And I remember that day coming home, trying to get ahold of her, and I found out she was okay. So it touches all of us. And thank you for letting me mention that.
I thought I was done. All right. Ladies and gentlemen, there being no further business before the Clackamas County Commission stays, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.